Easy. There we go. Good evening. I would like to call tonight's Shakopee School Board Special Business Meeting, February 12, 2018, to order. Will you please take the call, Sarah?
You're good. Bowerman, Callan. Here.
Ian.
Here.
Bob.
Here.
Tucker.
Here.
And Swanson.
Good evening. Move on to Item 2, Consideration of the Agenda as Presented. Entertain a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Angela?
I'll second.
Second. Tony? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. That motion carries. And we'll move on to Item Number 3, and that is we're going to adjourn now to a closed session. And I'm going to go ahead and read the reason for the closed session. And that is pursuant to Minnesota Statutes, Section 13D .05 subdivision 3(c)(3), to develop or consider offers or counter offers for the purchase or sale of real estate or personal property. And I'm going to go ahead and read the legal description of the property in question. That's Outlot A, Platinum number 27417 subdivision CD 27417 subdivision name Jackson Elementary. And with that, we will close. Entertain a motion to close?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. We are closed. Call the Special School Board Business Meeting back to order. Thank you for all those in the gallery that were patiently waiting for us as we considered the last line item. Going to go ahead and move on to Item Number 5, which is potential action regarding the sale of the property. And what I'd like to do is I'd like to entertain a motion here. And I'm going to go ahead and read this verbatim. This has to do with actually moving ahead with the purchase agreement as we have recently reviewed and approved. This is, oops, sorry. All right. Resolved that the Shakopee ISD 720 School Board accepts the purchase price of $1.1 million by Triad Development LLC for the purchase of Outlot A, Jackson Elementary, Scott County, Minnesota. Whereas, the Shakopee ISD 720 School Board has determined that this lot is not necessary for the construction of facilities to meet current or foreseeable needs of the district for educational purposes. So here's the recommended action. Therefore, let it be resolved that the chairperson and the clerk of the school board are authorized and directed to execute any documents necessary to consummate said sale, including but not limited to the purchase agreement, contract of sale, warranty deed, and closing statement per Minnesota Statute 123b .51 subdivision 1 as presented. So entertain that motion. So moved.
Second.
Second by Tony. All right. Any discussion? All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. That motion carries. And thank you for that. And I will entertain a motion then to adjourn the Special School Board Business Meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Angela?
I'll second.
Second. Sean? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Motion carries. The Special Board Business Meeting is adjourned. And we will just keep moving right on along. We don't see any reason to pause anywhere. I'll have to move my paper. All right. Should we go ahead and have a call to order?
You bet.
All right. I'd like to call it order the School Board Work Session for Monday, February 12, 2018. Sarah, would you please go first?
Bowerman, Callan. Here.
Ian.
Here.
Bob.
Here.
Tucker.
Here.
And Swanson.
Good evening. Move on to Item Number 2, and that is the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic before justice and tolerance, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Move on to Item 3, and that's Consideration of the Agenda as Presented. Entertain a motion?
A motion.
Matt?
Second.
Second. Angela? Any additions? Any additions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. That motion carries. And we will move on to Item 3.1, and that is the 2017-18 Budget Review and Revenue and Expenditures. And Superintendent Hager?
Yeah.
Welcome back.
Thank you. For public record, I just want everybody to know that I'm thrilled to be back here, serving as the interim superintendent of the Shakopee Schools. I want to thank the community for their heartfelt wishes and prayers the last several months and as well as the staff and the students. I got another bucket of notes from the kids welcoming me back today. So it's an absolute honor to be back. I apologize for the expediency in my leaving and how quickly the news was when I came back, but the circumstances were such that when I got my diagnosis, I required treatment right away. And that's why it happened so quickly. And inversely, the same thing happened on my return. I got the good news and the doctor said I could come back to work in a couple of weeks and I said, "I want to go back to work right away." So that's why everything happened so quickly. But again, my blessings and thanks to the entire Shakopee community.
We're going to ask Suzanne Johnson to come forward.
And Suzanne, if you get parked by the microphone up there, please.
Yeah, I tried to not tip one of these tables.
And I might ask John McGroom to come up by the, sit by Suzanne so he can try to make as appropriate too. And for the record, you know, it's been amazing having John here the last two weeks for me. And obviously, while I was gone, we've been interacting very regularly even while I was on leave and have definitely compared notes the last couple of weeks pretty intensely about the budget. But we also want to thank Suzanne for her service through the district. She's done a great job and we wish her the best as she moves on to her adventure.
All right. Good evening. I am going to start off on page 2 of the package that I gave to everyone. And I'm going to start by just kind of briefly talking about budget assumptions and the process for them. So we've gone through the revised budget preliminary with C-FAC and Finance Committee and given them some of the same information, but I just want to make sure that everybody gets kind of the same info. So I'll start by just walking through the revenue categories. Our state revenue is basically a, you know, large formula that the Department of Ed has that for each district, you can plump in your numbers and it tells you what your revenue is. So the state aid is all from what-if formulas, state reports, things that are out there that we're able to pull those numbers pretty easily from. Our federal revenue is primarily title, child nutrition, let's see, special ed and some Indian ed. So those, we also have agreements with those agencies, budgets with those agencies, so we really easily can go in and be aligned with what that budget number should be. So the revenue categories are relatively easy when it comes to feeling good about the process. Property taxes are all from the levy, so those come from outside sources as well. And then local fees are a little bit more of an estimate because it's a hodgepodge of things. So in the budget package, behind the summary report is always the detail of what makes up those lines. So as I'm going through and when I go to talk about the changes in lines, we can go into the detail pages, but if at any time you want to see what's in state revenue, it has the individual lines right behind it that shows all of the lines that make up that revenue line. So pretty easy to go down and say adopted versus revised, you know, where were our big changes. So the pages behind them may come with useful to be able to go back in and identify things that changed. So revenues relatively easy to budget for, special ed a little bit harder, which we'll talk about later, but I will go through our changes, but for now, I'll just kind of talk about assumptions. So on the expenditure side, salaries and wages, we started this very early, so I don't know if any of you remember when we did the budget timelines and kind of talked about how we would go through revised budget. So we printed new salary, new staff information beginning of the year, verified with the buildings, came back, made any changes that needed to be made, and then as of the end of December, we pulled the new staffing detail in to make sure we've captured everybody and we kind of dug into any changes between our initial reports, running way back in September and October to December, to really hit the one-on-ones of people who might have crossed over in that period of time. So salaries, wages, and benefits are all based on actual people that have been validated within the buildings. It's a big process, but I feel good that our data set is really good. Purchase services, supplies, equipment, all of those are more sitting down with the individual departments and saying, "Here's what's been in that activity in the past. Do we need more? Do we need less?" So we met with everybody and went through those line items individually to figure out where our budgets needed to be changed for revised. And other expenditures are also kind of in the same category. So a lot of, on the expense side, it's a lot of working with the departments and making sure that we've got the right numbers there. On the revenue side, we have a little bit more external source data to pull those numbers from. So that's where all of those pieces come in or how they get developed in the process when we're revising. Anybody have any questions on the process itself or any of the assumptions that we used? Okay? So now I'll go into a little bit of detail on what changed between adopted and revised. So on June 12th of last year, you approved a revenue budget of 93,745 and an expense budget of 92,776. So that is where we started at. And next to it, we have the revised budget. So as I just go down the list, in terms of state aid, most of our change is special ed related. And the state has reports out there, they give us special ed numbers. Special ed numbers are kind of hard to nail down, so I went conservative with this. The state aid reports told me on special ed that there was 9.9 million of potential revenue and I only booked 9.5 just to make sure if there was a big adjustment, they can literally swing by a couple hundred thousand. So we were conservative there, but that is the primary reason for the increase in state aid between adopted and revised. On the federal line, title was the only thing that had changes in them. And again, those are just coming right from those agencies to say this is the amount of money that you have available, should you spend, have those little expenses up that much. Property taxes did not change at all because those were based on the levies, there's no change in that. And then local fees went up by a few hundred thousand because of the land sale. And then they actually kind of went the other direction for activity fees because when they did the adopted budget, they had proposed some significant fee increases. And when I came onboard, we picked something in the middle, so we didn't go that extreme. So when you get into the details, you can actually see where we had fees budgeted at 375 and they actually, when the revised, came down to 300 because that's what we're seeing it actually do based on the fee change. Any questions on revenue? I didn't go into the detail pages, but again, on Pages 2 and 3, you can see all the individual, what we call codes that are going to show you which lines that changes in them. So you can definitely go through them one by one and see where those are. On the expenditure side, we have, of course, a lot going on. So the model itself captures all of our step-ups and everyone who has moved up a step or had a lane change when we're pulling the actual data and we're pulling people at what their current pay is. So the only groups that haven't settled are the teachers and then our unaffiliated groups, so we had to estimate those. So we originally in the budget had 4% for the teachers. When we have the tentative agreement, I put some of those numbers in here to more align with what we expect the actuals to be. So it did come in a little bit better than our first round. And then we also were conservative and gave the unaffiliated 3% where I think it first had it too. So I played the numbers a little bit to figure out what made the most sense. So right now, the unaffiliated are in at the 3%, and the teachers are in at the tentative settlement amounts. The, I guess a few of the things do require estimates, obviously. Over time, some of our teacher, our summer pay, we don't necessarily know right now who that group is, so we just estimate it those based on last year. Benefits, we had to...
Could you, sorry Suzanne, could you clarify Item 132, the custodial reimbursement?
Is it negative?
Yeah. Can you just clarify with that?
Yeah, I think what happens when they go and do whether they're supervising events and doing certain things like that, we're putting chargebacks so that we're not paying the overtime out of the general fund if we have an event come in at night and they maybe use our custodial staff and we actually bill them out for those costs. That's them saying, "Well, that's not really a general fund cost," and so that charges back to the right place.
So in theory, facilities revenue should offset that?
They do offset, you know, it offsets different categories depending on if it's custodial or a supervisor of some other sort or a cook, you know, those things might be different buckets.
Things that are breaking down like that, though, are as we do an adjustment process this spring, things we might want to consider recoding so it looks more clear to our public.
Yep. Employee benefits, you'll remember last year, that was our big surprise at the end of the year. So you came in unfavorable primarily because employee benefits had come in a million dollars more than what we had estimated. So when the adopted budget was approved, we would have had that lower level in, not knowing that that was going to hit us. So we brought that in and we brought people's actual what plan they were on and brought everything into the model to make sure we had the right number for benefits. And we now have that in the system, booking every single pay period instead of booking that entry all at the end of the year. So there won't be a surprise at the end of the year.
So this should be the last time, this is the hangover from there, right?
Yes.
Going forward, we're going to have that year.
Yep. So that, in all of 1718, it's going in by paycheck, but in 1617, that entry was all done at the end of the year. The other thing that's in here is we do do a draw from our other post-employment benefit trusts, so if we have certain benefits that we pay out for people who have, who receive severance from the district, we're able to draw some of that money back in. So there is in each, in the adopted, we have an actual sum reduction in expense for them. This I'll talk more about when we talk about budget, but if you look at the percent spent throughout the year, right now, we're spending at 47% in salaries and 50% in benefits, but we're actually 58% of the way through the year if you look at, you know, through the end of January. So right now, we're coming in low because we will have some retro pay for the teachers and those unaffiliated groups. And so it looks like they're coming in low, but when we actually do settle with those groups, some retro pay, those should come a little closer to what we actually expect them to be. And I, you know, when I looked at the lines by gun, some of those same things, we're going to have to pay them, pay all those percentages on that additional money, so those will come a little bit closer to where we want them to be. But right now, we are budgeting on the conservative side, so we are, our expenses are coming below what we're budgeting. So, or in the other way. All right. So purchase services, it's remained relatively consistent with the adopted budget, but there's a lot going on within that bucket. So we've got things swinging kind of both directions. When we did the adopted budget, we put some of our construction costs on the consulting lines, so in the 300s. And when we saw the actuals coming through, partway through the year, there weren't anything in the 300 codes, they were down in the equipment codes in the 500s. So we moved about a million dollars from one line to the other. So that's going to swing, but it's net zero impact. We're just saying the actual costs are coming through, affiliate improvements and not as engineering fees and architectural fees and things like that. So that's one of the changes between the categories that when you get back into the detail, I'll just flip to one of them so that you can see, for an example. This 305 line, it's six pages back if it helps you any. You'll see the adopted budget had 2.7 million and the revised budget only has 1.8 million. But then when you go to the lines of the equipment lines in the 500s, it goes the opposite direction. If it scrolls for me. Here we got the 797, 850 going up to 1.7 million. So just flip flopping between those codes. But then in purchase services, we also have transportation costs that we expect to rise, so I put an additional $500,000 on that line to make sure that we were covered there. To date, those aren't coming in at that level, but again, I don't want a surprise at the end of the year. So we'd rather put a little bit more there and be safe than have it be the other way. So we kind of took that approach all the way down. I would say that if we expect some costs could be higher, let's play it safe and try to accommodate that. So, and then the only other thing that I have in this category is that the finance department did a little bit of recoding to something that also is between accounts. Right here, this natural gas line at the bottom for 255,000, this was previously rolled up into another line item, so they're just, again, between lines. So if I go over to our utility payments, there is also a substantial decrease. So these, this fuel line, we had natural gas and we had like automobile gas all on the same line. So now Tyler has taken 255,000 out of this line and put it up into the natural gas line and just left automobile fuels on this line in the budget. So net, not a big change, but just a few significant things that went on in that account where you had, you know, one thing going up and one thing going down to balance them out. I'd go see those adjustments and that's the reasoning for them. Supplies, the same thing. They declined only because of this natural gas item. So we took the 250 budget and moved it into the 300, so it's just a line item move. There was a small decline in some supply item, supply lines in technology, but not anything significant. Equipment, not a lot other than the shift in moving from the purchase service line to the equipment line. And then our principal on leases is up a little bit from the year before. So that's kind of the changes between revised and adopted. As I've said, I think that we, you know, we tried to build some conservatism into this, do not have too many surprises. Any questions on adopted versus revised?
So when you add line items, new codes, do you have to go back to the software owner to do that or do you have?
No.
You can put in whatever we want?
Yep, we can create codes. We do. They all have to align with the Department of Ed's codes. So the UFR's codes, there's right on MBE's website. It tells us what, if something is gas, natural gas, what line it has to be in. So as long as it matches those, we also do what's called crosswalking of those where we want it segregated a little more than the state tells us, we can make our own account and map it to that code so that the state still agrees it's where they want it. But if we want three different codes for something that they all want on one line, we can map those to go over to the state all the way they want it to.
So if Scott, or if Todd Metzke makes a software adjustment, does he need, do you need to make him aware of this or does it, any, if he says here's a new release, will it account for any of the changes you made or do you have to let it know ahead of time?
Todd, yep. So Todd's model is built to have checks and balances where he's pulling from what we pull out of our software. So we send Todd a load of all of our accounts and then his software tells him if things are missing. So if Tyler added three new accounts, then Todd would have to map those into his software.
All right. Just want to make sure that we don't forget if we get a revision and all of a sudden lose five line items.
Well, that's what's nice about these reports is I think if we were missing accounts, I think things would stick out very well in these reports, but I agree it's good to ask those questions. I'll let, you ask any other questions you have on the adopted versus revised, and then if you want to do a quick five-minute review of kind of just a budget update as to where we are now through January, I can do that afterwards.
So, any questions?
Can you tell me what is miscellaneous revenue? What does that, what would that stem from?
So again, those are dictated by the Department of Ed, so it gives us a list of exactly what items are miscellaneous revenue. So it's usually going to be your fees, your field trips, just anything that doesn't fall under state aid. If you get donations, things like that, then they kind of fall under the other line that isn't state, federal, property tax.
So what's the difference between gifts and donations? Is there a difference between the two?
No, I think there's, there's two, no, the gifts and donations are all just one source.
There's a gift and donation line and then the miscellaneous revenue line?
So miscellaneous revenue is literally anything that doesn't fall into those other buckets.
Whatever you can.
Yep. So MBE, when you look at their description, they say anything that's not, anything that doesn't fit into the other categories goes into 2099.
Could you do me a favor Suzanne, just because, if I ran into you now, I had a mic, could you just re-clarify the questions that she just asked you?
She asked me what was, what was in miscellaneous revenue? So I was thinking she meant local fees on this line up here, but she actually meant miscellaneous revenue back in the details. So right here, if you look, computer doesn't want to scroll very well. She was asking what this miscellaneous revenue line was, and I thought she was asking the miscellaneous revenue on the summary page. So she's just asking what would all go into this miscellaneous revenue line item. And I said, I had said gifts, but that's because I thought it was the general line, but gifts is on its own line right above it. So really, like I say, miscellaneous is anything that doesn't fall into these other codes listed here is what we're supposed to put in miscellaneous. I could have Tyler look into it to see what types of things go into there, into that particular line.
Thanks Suzanne. So we'll, we'll be repeating questions just tonight so that people at home can hear what they are if the mics aren't picking them up.
Other questions for Suzanne? All right. If you wanted to go ahead and do your full review?
Sure. Yep. So as I said, we're 58% of the way through the year. Our revenues don't always flow exactly like that. Our revenues don't come in once every two weeks. Our revenues come from the state, you know, as they see fit. They have a regular schedule that they send us funds on, and I believe there is consistency to it. If you went back in and said, "When did we get our adult-based education?", it might be around the same time of every year, but our revenues don't necessarily come in in an even 1/12th, 2/12th stream at all. So that all is dependent on when we get our property tax money, which is usually one that's in November, December timeframe and then one that's in May. And then the state just come twice a month, but again, they're not always a consistent amount or evenly split up. So our revenues don't mean that if we've only come in at, you know, 44% that we're not in a good position. That just means that our revenue stream doesn't come in on that consistent basis. And you can see that when you look at the last two years, they were at 44, 41, and 44. So our revenues are pretty consistent at this time of year over the last three years. So nothing surprising about revenue. Our local revenue is up because we did have that land sale early in the year, so some of that comes in early and makes it look a little bit higher. Everything else is coming in pretty consistent with previous years. Nothing that's incredibly shocking. Our federal dollars, we typically draw, so we actually go into the system and say we've spent X, reimburse us for X. So that's all just based on how much we've had at a certain time and when we do the draw requests. So nothing of concern in the revenue areas in terms of where we're at budget versus actual. And then on the expense side, I guess I'd just point out again that both salaries and benefits are coming in lower than the 58% because of the retro pay. You can also tell on the benefit side that last year, we only spent 46%, we're at 50, but it's because we're booking that entry every single payroll instead of waiting until the end. So we will see our benefits come in a little higher than it has historically because of that. Purchase services coming in where we would expect it to, you know, it's under 58%, but I guess that's a good thing. And if we can have people keep their spending down, that's also a good sign that if we need to do belt tightening or anything like that, we're not way spent in, we're actually underspent in some of these categories. Supplies are also coming in lower than they were last year, pretty consistent with the year before, but nothing that stuck out to me. Equipment is a little bit front-loaded because all of our building improvements and work that we do over the summer is in there. And if there's any technology we purchase in advance, that kind of stuff will hit those codes early on and have a little bit less later on. So no big surprise in the equipment category being more than 58%, so that's pretty common. And then other expenditures, again, not a lot going on there. I can't remember. I'll just look at my notes quick to make sure it wasn't something I highlighted there. Yeah, other expenditures, you have like your dues and stuff are in those lines, and so a lot of people do pay their dues and memberships on the front end for the whole year. So dues, and then our ties, memberships, again, that we probably pay upfront a little bit, but nothing that's out of the ordinary in those categories. So I think budget is looking good. I will point I will point out, I don't usually go through program series, but I did see that the very bottom line here in other financing uses looks like it's overspent. Again, that's one where we do some allocating back to other things at the end of the year. And so there is one line, when I look at programs, it says this is kind of a clearing account and it's basically that amount that we're over. So Tyler said he'll do an entry that clears that out so that negative doesn't give anybody a heart attack. John, anything you want to add?
I'll just make some general comments if I may. Let me just make a few general comments and follow up to things that I've talked to the board about in the past. I think it's important to understand that these types of budgets are plans for how your revenues are going to come in and how you're going to spend your money. And that's what it is. And they're not always going to be exactly perfect because you're doing it in advance of what things actually do come up during the year with different things such as negotiated settlements, other kinds of things. I think it's important to point out that the revenue for the general fund and what you see here are three funds that are under the general fund umbrella. It's just the general workings of the district. It's the capital expenditures of the district. So if you buy something large or you do a major project, it's put in under Fund One. And then there's transportation in here too. It used to be going back a number of years where those were split out more. And this particular model groups all those so you can see that. But I think it's important to remember that you want to, where possible, keep sort of at least the track of what is transportation costing us? What are those capital things costing us? And not just assuming that all of this is expenditures for classroom construction or something like that. And that's, that's an important point. Food service is a, is a separate fund as is community ed and those are running pretty much on track with the adopted budget. But, um, so I don't believe there's any reason to have to adjust those particular two funds.
I will say that in food service, the only thing we have is a few more equipment needs with the high school coming in. So they did some remodel and some moving around serving lines and things, but Deb still had a couple of ovens and things that weren't in the construction project that she'll pay for out of her fund. So a couple of, we'll make a couple of beats to food service, but she's aware of it. Nothing that is unexpected.
And I'll chime in that as we present this budgeted information to the public, it's really a good news, bad news kind of deal for us. The good news is we worked really hard to present what we see as a pretty balanced budget for, for this year. The bad news is that's really hard to maintain, you know, and we, it's hard to maintain because we're towards the bottom of the metro when it comes to operating levy funds for our district. So we need the public to know that. And also, you know, the other piece of, of bad news is that we really need to start building up our fund balance. Our fund balance that we stepped into this year is precariously low. So if we were to have any catastrophic events or anything happen in our district, it, it would be really hard for us to, to deal with that. But, um, you know, we're not worried about statutory operating debt or anything like that as long as we can build up our fund balance, which is why we're going to be looking at a budget adjustment process this spring. Does that pretty much sum up?
Yeah, I can add a few things to that. Previously I said that I felt that the expenditures were going to come in higher than the revenues when we had projected actually that we would have a $1 million to be good at the end of the year. I think you need to be made aware that many people in the district here have worked very hard to go through each item. Suzanne and her people and principals, other types of folks have went out of their way to try and make sure that we have good information for this revised budget and they deserve a lot of credit for, for that. And they have, I guess I could say they convinced me that we can be actually at a balanced number at the end of the year for this year. And we'll talk about that on the first page here. But I reinforce with what Superintendent Anger said is that if we come in better than what we expect and we try to be conservative and beyond so that there wouldn't be any negative surprises. If there are any advantages where our revenues come in over your expenditures at the end of the year, that you're going to want to put away to get your fund balance. Cause right now we're sitting at about a 1% fund balance. Your board policy says eight is what your lower level is. So 1% on a 90 million plus budget is $900,000. So for every percent, you got to find that $900,000 worth of revenue over expenditures. That is not something you're going to be able to do easily or quickly. That's going to take discipline over a period of time here. I would also point out that there's, as Suzanne has noted, there's a couple of revenue streams that will not be available to you next year that are presently being used in this particular year. One was a land sale. You also are looking at selling some more land and I would just caution you that not to take necessarily that, that land sale now of that other and just put it into the general fund to make something look reasonable. I would earmark some of that to go back into your bond fund because that with the size project you have, you need to build that back or put some of that money back that was always done with bond issues to make sure that you've got some money to make improvements as the question includes. And secondly, in case you need to purchase something else in preparation for building another building, there's always important, an important part is to have some seed money that can get you in a position to buy things or take things that will help you with the next bond issue. And this district is going to face additional bond issues as, as the community grows. So I'm putting in that plug at this particular point. Another thing that would I think help understand things a little bit, the state and even to a certain extent, the federal government does a lot of catch-up after the year because they want to look at what your expenditures already were. You heard Suzanne talk about them making sure that it's in a format that the state will look at. And then some of the things that you get, like the number of students that you're going to be paid for, they wait until they get the end of the year for a cleanup payment. And usually that, it used to be about 10% and I believe it still is. So about 10% of your revenues from state come in, in November of the following year for this year. So that's another reason why you want some cash flow money so you don't have to borrow and that's one of the reasons why you want to fund balance. So just remember that even as you're looking at these percentages, you need to understand that one good chunk of that isn't going to be available to you until the fall. And so you want to, you have to take everything and be careful about that. We've got a couple of other expenditures next year that, that have to do with the ties organization, which is an organization that started about 50 years ago where a group of schools got together and they have, they were to provide products to help everybody. It was a cooperative venture and that has grown over time. It's now being dissolved. And so there's some outlay of money for next year that, that could take place, although I think in a final analysis that you're not going to be hurt by that, but you might need some cash flow for that. Another, another point that I think is important to understand is that your student population and how that affects things. I'd like to just hand out something that, and I think I have enough copies for people out there as well in the audience. One of the things that I think is helpful to do, if you want to just hand those out so people can take it, I might give them one. That'd be a good idea for me to give them.
I need one more Suzanne.
You need another one here? Sorry.
Thank you.
And you might have to share. I apologize for that. But one of the things that you want to look at is during the year is where is your population growing? What's happening numbers wise? And this is a situation where you take and we've been following how many students are at each grade level in each building throughout the district and what the total number is. Because that number of students dictates a lot of what general fund money you're going to get as far as your per pupil aid. So it's important to watch what's going on. Now, if you're growing, you normally picked up students and in fact, in this particular year, we have picked up some elementary kids, but your secondary kids tend to drop a little bit, especially in the second half of the year where some kids go to the alternative programs, some kids go to P S E O, some other things. So looking at what your year-to-year adjustment is, is important because that also allows you to have a good number to start out when you start making your assumptions for the next year for your revenues. So this is just one tool that I think would be something that you want to watch and compare to past years and how that's went so that you can, you know, project what your numbers are. Again, this shows pretty much a flat or slightly declining student population. It's up from a year ago. It started the year above where we projected numbers for this year to determine our revenue. But as you can see, we've, there's been some erosion. That's pretty normal for this district at the secondary level, but just keep that in mind and the financial people are going to want to look at that because that's an important factor. It's important in this way as well. 80% of the money that you receive to do the general education, the general fund part of the budget, 80% of that comes from the state of Minnesota. Now it's based on a whole bunch of things, but mainly a lion's share of it is how many students you have. And the projection for the per pupil aid for next year is a 2% increase from the state. Now there's other pots of money as, pots of money that Suzanne has shown you in, when she was going through the budget, but just keep in mind that that's, that's what we have coming in for just the number of students that we presently have. The federal government's amount of money and a lot of that's in special ed, as is some of the state money, is about 15% of what you see in that budget. The federal government's revenue to us is about 15%. And then you split, excuse me, 15% in property taxes, is property taxes to go with the 80%. The federal government is really in this area is only giving us about 3%. And then the local other miscellaneous incomes like fees and different things is only 2%. So the majority of your money is based on how many kids you have and what the state of Minnesota gives you. And then the property taxes that people play, pay, which I paid for a number of years here in this district, which I'll now pay at Northfield is, is 15%. Now somebody will look at the levy or what their property tax is and they'll say, well, I pay quite a bit of money, but most of that is bond issue money or other things that the public has had a chance to, to vote on. That's separate from this particular budget that, that we're talking about here because this does not include bond payments in that category.
Yep. Along those lines too, we're really paying attention to what we call capture rates. How many kids are we capturing from districts outside ours as opposed to how many from our district are going to other neighboring school districts? So in future meetings, we'll share that information with you too. It's pretty interesting stuff and might be a little bit surprising, but you know, those pupil units really drive the budget, so it's super important.
And when I look at what we use to look at our pupil counts, we've been using Sarah Sheen in addition to some reports off the system. We bring in early childhood and a couple of other components, but when I back those out, I'm literally within one pupil of the February one numbers just in average. So it's kind of weird how it works out, but at least that gives you a feel for what we've estimated for pupil units that they're coming in right where.
And if you want to go back, Sarah's probably got this since 2000.
Right, 20 years.
Every month.
Every month since August of 2000. So again, I, I'm pointing out that, that those are important, important pieces to look at. Now, why am I now supportive of a balanced budget for this particular year in the revised budget? It's because every item, as Suzanne pointed out, as we went through and tried to make sure that we've got that as close as we possibly can. There are always going to be some things that surprise us. If we're off a half a percent, that's a $450,000 swing. I am, I think we have to credit the, the staff and people in, that are working for the community and the district who have went out of their way to try and tighten belts already. We've given up some positions, we've given up some things that, that haven't really, I don't think have affected directly classrooms, but there, there are things that we could do without. We've had some positions where people have left us in the portion of the year and we've reassigned people to, to fill those roles so we didn't have to go out and hire that. That's credit to the administrative folks and the teachers and other types of people who are pitching in to make things work for us. And the district should be, I think, proud of those people and, and, and be thankful that everybody's trying to help the financial picture of the district during this year. It's why we can offer this more of a balanced budget. Are you going to speak to the front page?
Yeah, to the fund balance, yeah.
Yeah, let's, let's talk fund balance if we may, unless there's some questions of me for what I have asked. We'll go, as soon as we can get back up here, we'll look at the overall budget and I want to point out a couple of things that we're not asking for approval tonight. We're just laying out information and then the board would need to approve our revised budget at the end of this, at the end of this one with your next meeting if you're supportive and you, you need to make sure that your questions are answered tonight about any specific, as much as possible or between now and that meeting so that you're comfortable with what we're offering.
Before you do it, I also want to chime in and thank our public this year. We have had some excellent questions about our budget this year and so we make no apologies about the detail that we're going into, although it might be lengthy for some people. We really have appreciated every question that we've received from the public this year and it's really helped us guide this process. And so we want to be as transparent as possible with, with all of our revenues and expenditures and that's, this is our attempt to do so.
All right. So based on the revised budget, the total revenues and expenditures here at the bottom for the general funds, are going to tie to the reports that I just showed you. So we basically started the year with a $1.067 million fund balance and have put our revised revenue and expense into here to show that our fund balance will be going up by approximately 36,000 to get to 1.1 million in the general fund in total. I did this year assign, Brian presented, it's probably been a few months now, where he talked about the technology money that they've gotten for insurance that will eventually have to make repairs on some devices. So I've actually estimated what I think is that money and isolated that so that it doesn't look like it's part of our general fund balance. I've pulled it out on its own. So that is now in this line. So that's just something new that people haven't seen so far, but what happens is that on the top you'll see our. But, what happens is that on the top, you'll see our, our unassigned fund balance. These two funds, the long-term facilities, maintenance and capital projects can go into a negative and then we get the money in future years and then they spend a little less in those years and it balances itself out. But those have to be deducted out of the unassigned to get to the general fund balance. So, if you look at the unassigned, we are improving by $390,000, but I think in the past, we've focused mostly on the general funded. So, pretty flat, but again, based on a conservative budget that we don't want to give you any surprises on. In terms of the other funds, you'll just see here that food services going down by a bit, that their fund balance was a pretty healthy fund balance and they do have some needs. And so, she's going to purchase a few new things that are needed. And so, that is, that fund is isolated and food service is allowed to spend on those items. So, if, if they have needs, they actually encourage keeping, you know, kind of a couple month reserve of expenses and then improving things out of that fund if there's things that they need. So, we've captured those in the revised. Community service budget is increasing by almost $100,000 in total. We will be, I mean, I think we'll assess some of these individual lines to make sure if there's anything that should be shifted around. You can see a couple of the funds look like they're decreasing and then one is increasing. So, they, they're all somewhat related, but they also have specific rules around them. So, I think it's just worthy of analyzing to make sure that we don't keep drawing one fund negative if the other ones have money and we can shift it around a little bit. So, overall, that fund continues to be healthy. Construction fund will be decreasing because we're spending that money down. So, as we go through this year, we will get this most of the way spent and then there'll be a little bit of work left in the summer that still needs to be done. So, that'll have a small fund balance to pay anything that still has to come out of that, the bond money. And then, our debt service funds really are just used to pay principal and interest payments out of, so that we just keep enough in those to pay those, so nothing surprising there. Same as the trust funds are just, you know, if we do get some type of, I believe memorial or scholarships or things like that, we track them there. The internal service funds are medical and dental or self-insured plans. And the OPEV or vocal trusts, so nothing too surprising in those other categories, but we do have the full picture for you here if you've got any questions.
Give me three comments. First of all, just echo what Gary said earlier about thanking you Suzanne, our team, and John as well, as well as C-Fac and everybody else that's pitched in to make sure that the information that we have here is as accurate as can be. We totally recognize you've had a roll of sleeves and dig and lots of courageous conversations have taken place and shared multiple buildings to ensure that the expenditures we have on there actually reflect the need, which I understand maybe has been a change for some. So, I appreciate that work. The other thing I would say is, thank you for your conscious effort to remove surprises. I think I could probably speak on behalf of the board, since we're kind of all done with that. So, really appreciate that additional effort. And then, the last thing would just be a question, and that is, what do you need, what does our finance team need from this board to ensure that we continue this, this positive progress forward? What can we do?
I'll go first.
I would definitely say that the budget process continue to be something where many people are involved and it doesn't become in isolation. So, just making sure that, you know, if we maintain a model like this or similar to this, it really allows you to make sure that all, everything is accounted for. So, the way that we did the staffing of going through, even though it took a lot of time to get it where it needed to be, it made sure that everybody had input and if something wasn't right, that we captured that. So, I think it's just making sure that everybody stays actively involved and that budget reports are presented, you know, on a pretty frequent basis, monthly or every other month, to make sure we're keeping you up to speed. And I think that the involvement of the committees has been very good. I mean, I think that the citizens committee has asked great questions and they have tackled issues that, you know, were, I think, on the front end of things before others were asking those questions. So, it's been good to have those committees involved. And from a board side, I mean, you've all been great. So, I mean, you've asked me many good questions. And so, I just say to keep asking the questions and stay involved and I think we can turn it around and be on a good path.
Couple of perspective points from me. Suzanne talked about involving people in the budgeting process and I think that's extremely important to have conversations, Gary put into place appropriately, some regular meetings with different administrators and other groups. And that will help in the fact that things can be put out there and people can respond. Gary's big on taking feedback and taking responsibility because ultimately, he's got a responsibility to oversee the whole thing. But by involving people, as Suzanne said, that's, that's extremely important. I think the other thing is, another thing, because I have three or four here, is that you as board members have to stay engaged. And it's up to Gary and his staff to provide the information you need and to educate you on what the real situation is. So that you can make solid decisions on behalf of the school district. And for three months that I've been here, you've done exactly that. We've tried to provide information to you so that you have a good understanding of where we're at, that the community has a chance to listen to these things, that you've got C-Fac, you've got other people. But that's critical, that everybody understands that that pattern of decline, which we believe now we have flattened out, now we, all the people that were working on this, that, that's flattened out. That's not a good enough goal yet because you've got to get some money back in your fund balance. But the reality is, is that I believe you've actually done that and that's because directive from you as a board and then people were going out of their way to make sure that that happens. So, that's important. I think it's important also to, to set some, some goals about how far you want to be, but be realistic in those goals regarding your fund balance. It's not something you can go from a million dollars up to eight, which is, you should have about seven or eight to get your eight percent. That's going to be a steady climb over time and it's going to take some real diligence in order to do that. Gary's prepared to provide you the leadership for that, but that's important. I think it's also important to use people like Tyler and some of your other staff people to be involved and to watch the system and be comfortable with making suggestions. Because the people that work with this day-to-day are the people that also have sometimes the best, the best ideas. And with Suzanne being out of the building now for a little while, you know, I've gone to Tyler and some of the other people and they've really been helpful. But, you have to listen to those people too. And so, I would, I would do that. And I know Gary's, Gary has already been talking to people too about, you know, different things. So, those are some things that, that I think need to happen. You need to have an environment where you're going to share information and you're going to do what you say you're going to do with, with your projections and things. I'd like to point out just a couple of other things on that first page if we're still able to look at that.
And let me interrupt John because I just want to make two points on that question too really quickly. This spring, we are going to be going through a budget adjustment process. And we say adjustment because it may not be all reductions. But, I also invite everyone to stay engaged in that process this spring. We are going to give everyone the opportunity to chime in and give us ideas for things that they may say, "Hey, maybe if you cut this," or, "We're not spending enough money in this area," or, "How about if we look at this a little bit differently?" So, that's been a really healthy process throughout the year and we really need to maintain that this spring as we take a look at what we're going to do for adjustments. And also, one other thing is, as a, as a school district, we need to take a look at the kinds of supports we receive in finance. Do we want to continue with outside resources that we've used to give us financial advice, for instance? Or do we make some changes? And I'll be presenting some options pretty quickly at an upcoming meeting for that too. So, I just wanted to piggyback those two points on what you two said.
Very important. The other thing I would point out is, is that if you look at this first page, there's some things that money has been moved in the past. And to me, you have to be diligent about keeping money in the right bucket. And one example here, if you look at the line that talks about operating capital, operating capital is for large dollar expenditures for equipment or for, could be for curriculum and could be for a lot of different things. You get something that we used to call capital outlay. It was more major topics. But one of the things is, is you're so, you're seeing there that there's $139,644, down about four or five lines. And to me, I believe that should be kept as a restricted number rather than just part of your general fund. Because you are going to have some expenditures with some facilities coming up where that's going to be beneficial for you to have that in that fund. And if it gets lost by just being put in with the general fund, even though it might make the general fund look $100,000 better, I think it will serve you better in the long term to make sure that that's, that that's kept separate. Now, that doesn't mean, it might mean that your, you know, your unrestricted fund balance might not look quite as good. But, that's one that the, if you ever really had some significant problems, you could still go back and use that money. But keeping money in the, in the bucket in which it comes to is, is important and not trying to use it to, to make something short-term work. You've got to keep the long-term idea out there and, and follow that. So, you know, that's, that's a little bit about how you look at this and where I think we believe some of the things that you can do and the whole district has to do going forward. Because realistically, I talked about a big number of reductions for next year. A number of the things for going into the additional space at the high school, we've been able to address by not opening Pearson. That's helped. But, things like another $375,000 to $400,000 worth of energy, other types of things have nothing to do with the curriculum or the structure of the delivery of service of education to kids. The academies, the, there's a, there's a number of things just because you have more people in that building and you're taking on that extra square footage, there's costs there. There's the fact that the land sale revenue is going to be gone. There's some potential for some expenditures to go beyond the two percent that, that the state is giving you on an increase on the student per pupil unit thing. If the, if the student population stays about like this, you're hopeful that you can keep your, your teaching staff in that same kind of ratio. But, you're going to have to look at that big picture and that's something that we've tried to put information together so your superintendent can look at and have good information for you as the determination about what has to happen with your budget for, in the next two or three months. Because there's going to have to be course correction, there's going to have to be other things. We haven't, we've, we maybe flattened out the pattern, but the pattern has to hold now with the different things that are going to be picking at it. And you want to have that pattern turn and go the other way. So, it's going to require, as Gary said, doing some things differently going into next year. And ultimately, Gary needs to make a recommendation after he gathers from all of different people. Ultimately, you're going to have to approve a budget for next year that hopefully, you've got a good basis to work off of because of what Suzanne and other people have done for you during this year.
Any other thoughts?
I just want to thank you guys so much for all the hard work and just, all the teachers and principals and everybody else who's had to help with this. Thank you.
For those at home, Angela showers praise. Everybody showers praise. All right. I think that's it. Thank you very much. Are you staying up for the P-card?
I figure I should.
Yeah. Okay. Let me just say, do it. Moving to 3.2, review of P-card user list. And for those that recall, at the organizational meeting, we asked that the P-card list be brought back to staff because there was a couple of items in there that were, need to be, concerns are drawn, we're going to say in question. Some of those were with respect to some, you have, I think, six social workers. There was one, only one on there that had a small balance, wanted to figure out what was the right thing to do there for consistency, as well as building principals versus the principals admins and what the expenditures look like there, so.
Yep. So, I, for the principal one, I went, kind of just asked the principals what their needs were, what their preference was. And I had an across-the-board agreement that the principals are often letting their admin assistant use their card when they reach their limit. So, I had a unanimous agreement from them saying that they preferred that they have the lower limit and their admin assistants have the higher limit. So, my proposal would actually be to bring the principals down to 2,000 and their assistants up to 10 from five.
And the principals still need to sign off on every?
Yep, it would still be, because our, really, our manual says you're not supposed to use other people's cards. When we had the review done by Clifton, Morrison, Allen, that was one of their things that they could see, you know, a director's card where the invoice was all invoiced to the admin assistant and then it's behind their card. So, it just creates more question than having them own their card and knowing that that, so now they have to be in by the 10th of the month. I mean, they don't have much turnaround time. So, as long as it's, they're doing the review and pulling people accountable, I guess I recommend flipping the principals and the admin assistants limits. The social worker, I would just say we bring the one in line with the others.
So, we would cancel, we'll let you cancel that card and zero it out as not being necessary for consistency. I'm in full support of this.
I just, I just want to stress the fact that, more importantly than some of these limits, because we can change these at any time if we see different patterns and things like that, is the fact that we've put checks and balances into place this year that are really working. And no P-card purchases are occurring without appropriately being approved.
You will want to figure out, I mean, my time I was reviewing the principals and the directors, people who didn't really have someone to bring it to. So, somebody will have to fill that gap of making sure somebody's, but even if Tyler or somebody reviewed those in detail, I mean, I'd send them back once in a while, but somebody should be reviewing all besides not, you know, somebody under them in our building.
It would seem appropriate that those would go to the superintendent for now.
Yeah. And you may laugh at this, but for the public record, I have yet to use my P-card yet as superintendent of our school district. It's under lock and key.
So, this is a little bit off the beaten path, but we've talked about it before. So, we have a couple of departments, we have one department in particular who has asked about getting it more in the department's name, say, you know, teaching and learning. If their admin assistant is purchasing for the teaching and learning department, not for herself, ever. She's basically buying curriculum and what others' needs are, they feel more comfortable having a card that's a teaching and learning card. The credit card company allows it, it would be the same review process. People are less comfortable with these high limits through all we've gone through. You're going to have to decide as a board if you want to tell those people, this is the way it's going to be and you're going to have a high limit under your name. Or if you're okay with having a P-card that has a department name on it, so that one person isn't kind of scrutinized for being the purchaser, the centralized purchaser.
I would have to say that I am not a fan of department card in light of everything that we have experienced here. I would never encourage that or recommend that. I would like to see a name associated with any and every. I would like to see a name associated with any and every transaction we have. And I can appreciate that there are some that may be less comfortable with that higher dollar figure. If you're in a leadership role or you're in that particular role, sometimes your position is going to require you to do things that are uncomfortable, but provided you're doing it ethically and legally, you should have a clear conscience when you make those purchases. And I think it's up to that director of, you know, whoever's supporting that admin to reinforce their behaviors and make sure that they feel supported. I wouldn't want anybody to feel uncomfortable doing that. But again, if they are supported from their leadership, they should be able to do that with a clear conscience.
That makes sense to me.
I 100% agree. I agree.
I do as well.
So would you like for then at the next meeting, me to switch these to be the principals and the admin assistants at the levels we just discussed, and then the social worker being consistent on that one? And then everything else would just come back as is except for those changes?
And then any other departments that you didn't specify exactly who's got that?
Right. You mean in terms of the card, the name?
Yes.
Yeah, we would not allow that and we'll just go back and make sure that people know that it's expected in that position, that that card is in that name and that's the way it is.
And we, of course, won't take action on that, so you'll have to implement those changes and bring it back in the next position. Perfect. Any other comments or questions about P-card user?
I'm okay with change, I just want consistency.
Yep. And then I just, I mean, I would agree with Gary that, I mean, the only thing to note is that if you have somebody who has a strong purpose for having a higher limit, if one building has something going on and they're expecting higher expenses or something, I also feel like we have to find a way to meet in the middle as well, though, to have consistency. But if the need is higher, you know, technology, you know, maybe every admin assistant only has $10,000, but they go out and buy all the iPads and it costs $200,001 in swoop, I want to make sure we can accommodate that and not lose out on some of our rebates and things that we get for those dollar amounts if we can actually take advantage of those. So we just want to find the balance where here and there, if there's a need for somebody's limit to go up a little for a specific purchase and it's all gone through the approval chain, I mean, a lot of that's already gone through a quote or bidding process, so it's definitely approved. So just some of those things you'll want to think about.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right.
All right, we're moving on to 3.3, any facility use? You're going to run with this one or?
I'll work, I'll let Johnny run with it for the start, then he'll hand me the time, perhaps, we'll see.
Just a brief history regarding these fees. This is not part of the cooperative agreement between the city and the school district about some of the facilities and the way some things are done. That, we're working on that, or someone will be continuing to work on that to get that document adjusted as well. But here's fees that we are now, with the new facilities, we need to take a look at, you know, what are we going to charge as rental for this? If you look at the first page, and I would go to the clean one, not the red line one, if you can. There used to be four categories for how we would charge for different uses of our facilities in the district. We've taken that down to three with the committee. The CPAC has looked at this, a lot of different people here in the district have looked at this. And here's where I think we're at. Category one is if it's a school-sponsored group or activity, we will not charge rental fees to them. It's one of the things under our control that would be, we just be paying ourselves, so why would you do that, right? There might be some related fees that someone might have to pay depending on if a group wanted to do something that was kind of out of the norm. But for the most part, category one does not get charged in fees. Category two, and this has to speaks to the, two things. Number one, it speaks to the cooperative effort that we've had with the city. We use lots of their facilities, like TAPA and some ICE and other kinds of things. They use a lot of our facilities. At any one time, it might be that one side's coming out a little better than the other, but that's just the way, that's the way it works sometimes. I think secondly, the important thing is the taxpayers paid for this, excuse me, the taxpayers have foot the bill for the facilities that we have, and we want to be good stewards of the taxpayer dollars. And we want to make sure that the community can use that. And I think the cooperative effort and what the district has done on behalf of the community has been exemplary over a lot of years. So youth activities, other kinds of things in the, in the community can use our facilities without a charge as long as it's when a time that we're normally open and there's, it's not creating some additional expense that's out of the ordinary. So we, in fact, coordinate schedules and things so once the school is done with elementary gyms, for example, we've got people playing volleyball, adult volleyball, we've got youth groups that are in there practicing, we've got lots of things going on. There's not a big, a big problem with that. Where we get into fundraising, however, though, when we're bringing in large groups to use our facilities and there are people that are not directly involved or part of these organizations, that's where I think there's a difference here. And there's a number of times when we have organizations from the community that we would normally not charge for, who are now doing a fundraiser of some type. And I think it's, while we were charging them before for certain expenses like custodial time, overtime, those types of things, we have not charged them for the actual rental of the facility. I think with the facilities that you presently are providing, that really need to be cared for and are expensive to keep up, such as the fieldhouse, might be certain parts of your theater complex, some other things like that, especially when we're bringing in outside people who are paying, who are paying to come and watch a youth tournament or something, there needs to be a charge. I've left open the percentage that we would charge of the rates that you'll see on pages two and three. There's been discussion about that that should be as high as 75%, but I believe that that's probably too high because I think we want to make sure that we are partnering with all of the people in the district that need, need to use our facilities. So maybe a more appropriate percentage is 50%. I've left that open, I'd like to hear where, what the board might want to talk about there. Secondly, some of these groups that raise funds actually plow them back into the schools' facilities by putting in scoreboards, dugouts, all kinds of things. And I, I would believe that if people are doing those types of things, that we give them credit versus rental situations. It just would make sense to me that rather than them taking all their money and going home because we're charging them, if they're, if they've got a history of putting things back and we worked that out ahead of time, I think you can waive those rental fees. Category three are individuals, private agencies, different businesses and things. If they're coming to use it for a for-profit situation and you live within the confines of the school district, then you'd pay whatever the rental fee costs. And if you're coming from outside the community, from someplace else and want to use something, you'd pay 125% of what that rental fee is because you're not contributing through your tax dollars to afford the maintenance and provide those services. Any questions on that? Then we can split the next pages and talk about some of those dollar amounts. Okay. Couple of things here. We've updated this, our list of fees had been static for a lot of time, but we've also got some additional, additional things that have, that have come now because of the construction at the high school, i.e. the fieldhouse, some of the turf fields. The theater complex has been, you know, taken to another status. So what we've done here is tried to put some dollar fees in. I think for a couple of changes here that I might suggest is, when you're looking at grass playing fields outside, to try and charge by the hour is pretty difficult. I think we actually should, we should look at that as like a half-day increment rather than that because, you know, we're going to, in some cases, price people out of being able to use just a grass softball field at, or a baseball field at one of the elementaries, for example. So I would suggest that we, after you give us some feedback, we'll have a final document for you to approve at your next meeting. But that's one of the ones that I, I believe we should probably look at a couple of these to make some adjustments. And I know Gary's got some suggestions there, too, about that, and we can talk about that in a minute. But I won't read down through these. You could, again, see that the fieldhouse is, is one that's, for the cleaning and the extra things for that, that is an expensive facility. You might want to compare it somewhat to, the city allows people to use the gym at the community center and some other stuff, but if you want ice, the specialized space, you've got to pay, you've got to pay a different amount. So there's some, I think, validity to, to looking at that. And Von Field, the track itself, we're talking about one amount, but if you're going to use actually Von Field, the turf, because of that, we want to probably, you know, single that out, too. The next page is just what we're, what we would charge for different equipment and things that someone might want to use. And we talk a little bit about staffing charges, that you're going to pay custodial fees for setup, takedown, cleanup, especially if it's outside their regular work hours. So like if you were doing a weekend tournament and we don't have anybody on, you need to pay those costs. If you're going to want to use the kitchen, there's special costs for that, and there's special rules and laws about kitchen stuff, so we need to have a person there. We might believe that we need a building supervisor. If there's security or police that are needed by your activity, then you would need to pay for that. And again, we would charge from the time to setup and takedown. So rather than say anymore, I'll just sit back and answer any questions or?
I wasn't moving the mic to cut you off.
I think you should. Because I personally would rather go sit back there.
I just, my comment is, I don't think we should look at these numbers as finite numbers. This is a really hard process to do, to come up with correct amounts. And the last thing we want to do is alienate any members of the public, any longtime partners that we've had. So they may come back to us and say, whoa, 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 you've priced us out of what we've usually have been able to do. So I think we really need to be open to the feedback that they give us, bring it back to the board really quickly and be willing to make changes as we look at it. But I do want to stress, this is a really difficult process and our staff and John worked really hard on that. But, but I, I would not be surprised within a couple of months if somebody comes back and we say, here's one number we really need to look at, we've probably put it too high.
I have a question. Help me understand, I'm just going to take, we had a, two incredibly successful, amazing basketball tournaments in the fieldhouse in the past month. And I'm assuming since they're a youth organization, it would fall under number two, but since they're fundraising, it would fall into the whatever percent? And they used, I don't know, let's say they had 10 hours, they rented the, they used the fieldhouse maybe 10 hours per day over two whole days. Do we, would we, that's still a big number.
It's a big number, but we also have to consider the fact that, you know, we've got to staff out and keeping that space clean is going to be a challenge. So that fieldhouse of all new spaces is really going to put a lot of questions for us that we're going to have to think hard about. And we don't want to be losing money on these ventures, but we also don't want to lose our community collaboration because we owe that to the community because they paid for these spaces.
But just to follow Sean's example, as I understand this, it would just be for the tournament when there's admission being charged and there's going to be coming in, there would be no fee to use elementary school gyms for basketball practice?
Right, because that's not a fundraiser.
Other than cleaning?
Yeah.
And we've just picked that up in the past, and I think the same can be true for the fieldhouse, that you wouldn't, if, if there's four teams in there practicing and we don't, we don't have any extra cost. One thing we have talked with the city about is if they're going to put their youth organizations in there that, and we're going to have that many people congregated in one spot, that it might be appropriate for the city to provide a supervisor on the nights when they're going to use the whole facility. There's a difference between using the whole facility at the fieldhouse versus using Red Oak Gym where eight kids, 10 kids come in with an adult and have a practice. And that's true for other individual court kinds of things. The fieldhouse, however, if you, if you've got six teams in there, people walking in and out, you know, maybe there should be somebody there to make sure that we're not spilling stuff all over or leaving food or that type of thing. And we came up with these dollar figures, actually, by looking at places like Stillwater, Hopkins, Benetton, Gahan Prairie, right down the line. We tried to be kind of middle-of-the-road for what they charge. So I think that's the difference, if I can point that out, is just a particular gym, one thing, if you're, and if you're bringing in a lot of people, everybody's not going to stay just in the fieldhouse. They're going to be walking around, it's going to, it's going to, there's going to be, you know, potential for, you know, them setting up different things. If you've gone to one of those, there's somebody selling cotton candy, there's all this kinds of stuff. We just have to be aware that those things are there, it needs to balance out. But I think you're, and that's why we left the percentage there that you want to charge open, because originally we tried to line up with those other places and we had 75%. And when you look at it, it just, it just felt like too much to, to charge the community, so.
Well, and that was my point, was getting back to that percentage number. But I want to be really careful and make sure we get the right.
I think that's where Gary's point comes in, that one, these are the numbers, the negotiation becomes that percentage of that amount. I think what, one of the things that might be helpful would be to mock up, like for example, a basketball tournament that's two days, or a theater production that's going to be in the small stage for three weeks of rehearsal and then a week of, you know, there's, maybe we just need to mock up a couple of different examples and price something out and then put that in front of an RBTC or the boosters or whoever and say, okay, how does this play with what you would have expected? Can we do, can we take that action, just to see?
Well, we've already, we've already done part of that with talking to the, to the rec department who oversees all those associations about where we thought these numbers were going to be. We've had that meeting. We can do it again, we can do a mock-up. For example, with what you just said about the theater, to me, the practices of the theater, again, if, if it's a reputable local group, they're going to come in, they're going to take care of that facility. It's not like we have somebody from the outside coming in and for their, they're just going through their different things up until the time we start taking tickets. I don't know, I don't see us charging for that. I see us only charging for the night when they're bringing an outside group in that will have some extra costs into the district and might be appropriate to charge them. We can get that mock-up going, we can do some more stuff.
So just out of curiosity, grass, turf, I'm not saying it lasts forever, but it seems like you would almost charge more, if not the same, for, because it's got more upkeep?
It might have more upkeep, but the normal turf It might have more upkeep, but the normal turf field has to be replaced in about 10 years, and that's a big number. And it's different than, and frankly, with the city, I will tell you that the city maintenance people and stuff have a great connection, and, and they drag fields for us, they line fields. There's this cooperative thing back and forth, and the city rec department should be, and the city maintenance and everybody else should be congratulated on, on the way we work together on that. Now, I think that's a, that cooperative effort is what we should do for the community, so... There are no other questions on that? I believe I can...
So no action out, obviously, but we come back, but we can, this is maybe an action to take, an action to adopt.
Correct.
I think, if I could just put in another deal, I think Gary and I are both under the same, the idea, is that you want to be providing you with information on one meeting, and we talked about this before, about asking you to vote. It went that way with the, well, with the attendance areas and with how we move people at Pearson was opening. I believe it helps if we can educate, provide information, and you have a chance to think about it, even get some feedback, and then you're just able to make a good decision at a later time with a recommendation from your superintendent.
Perfect. Before we have gone, leave the mic again, I just wanna say, I don't think the community of Shakopee could be served any better by any other acting interim superintendent than what we had with Mr. McRum, so it's been an absolute honor to have him with us.
Thank you.
All right, move on to item 3.4, open enrollment, interdistrict transfers, and attendance area busing.
Yeah, I'm gonna ask Dave Orlovsky to come and assume the microphone for this.
Mr. Orlovsky told me that I had to walk back up here. I always do what David tells me to do. He knows my wife, that's the real problem.
So this was something that was on the agenda for the 29th as well, that we got snowed out on. But I, I think it is kind of just looking forward, this is, we have a number of issues that kind of came up as part of the attendance area process, that we said, once we get this set, then we're gonna figure these things out. And we know that's gonna come back at some point in the future. And so we wanna put these things out there now, it's just issues that the board is gonna need to make decisions on. And so it's around transferring within the district, people that live in our, in the Shakopee Public Schools boundaries, and wanna change schools from where their boundary, where their home is, boundary versus where they wanna attend, for whatever reason. Students that open enroll in our district that are coming from outside Shakopee Public Schools. And then I just tried to capture a couple things related to busing that continue to keep, that came up repeatedly, so if you could maybe scroll down a little bit, Sarah, if you got that to the bottom. So just from centers, walking distances, and then something Gary has brought up a couple times, the exploration of a cave for service. So again, this would be one of those things, there's no decision, there's not even any proposal, but it is something that we're gonna need to make, I think, some decisions on fairly quickly. Some of this becomes more critical with Jackson and Eagle Creek, you know, Eagle Creek being close to its capacity, and Jackson being a bit over already. And same thing with East and West Junior Highs. I think there's a little more flex there, because it's just a larger building, but I understand some of our principals are already getting questions from people who are wondering, what do I do? I don't know, Gary or John, if you wanna answer that.
Let me just add that it might be the time to look at a little bit more centralized situation with determining about these interdistrict transfers, rather than just leaving it up to the building principal. I think that puts them in a, in a difficult situation. As David points out with his sheet here, you know, if somebody's got a third grader in a building, and now they've got a, someone who's come into kindergarten, you've got that extra person, you're not gonna say, in my opinion, that you can't come with your older sibling. We, we would sort of grandfather those kinds of people in and out, that's what's been done in the past. But if we have a new situation where a family moves in and wants to be in a different building, then I think, while the principal should have some say there, potentially there should be a clear-cut policy about how we're gonna deal with that, and are there criteria? Because you can always probably sneak one more kid in, but how many kids do you sneak in before you start making some things difficult, just because of the teacher-to-student ratio or how much space? Now, you could deal with, with that, and I would not recommend that this year, but you could deal with that by every couple years rebalancing your elementary schools, because as we've learned from Red Oak in this district, at one time, that was the new school, there weren't that many kids there, it grew to be very, very big. Now, as the homes in there and the families living in the homes in that attendance area have sort of aged out, where those kids are now in our middle school, or junior high and senior high, that elementary has shrunk. And that was the, that was the pressure point, you know, a few years ago. Now we've got Eagle Creek and Jackson as pressure points. So, but to switch attendance areas every year or two is gonna, is gonna be problematic. You might need to take a look at that, but I think you need to, we're, I had recommended before, and I believe this is the right thing, for us to live another year with what we're presently at, because if you look at that sheet, you can see that moving kids up, some kids are gonna be moving out, we're gonna be moving in similar numbers, so it's not gonna change dramatically, unless there's something that, you get a whole bunch of people that want to be in one of those buildings and now wanna do an interdistrict transfer. We should have a criteria set up and a process that I think is also, goes through the district level. I know David is really willing to take that on, excuse me, he did want to... So, so anyway...
We asked who wanted to take care of this, and everybody took one step back, except for Dave, so...
So I guess, you know, Gary should weigh in on this a little bit too, because this is something he, I'm sure has experienced, I know he's experienced it before in previous administrative life, but, and again, not asking for your direction tonight, trying to lay out what the situation is, make sure your questions are answered, and we could have some dialogue here with people, giving you some opinions about some things, but then ultimately making a decision. Because, I'll give you one quick example, if you look at the, the daycare center that is moving in across from Jackson, that, that potentially has a situation where it's there. Their parents that are bringing kids there may want their children to go back to where they normally go. In this district, what we've said is that you have to bus them, we're not gonna take them back. If you're there, we can bring you, you know, you can go to the tent, the school in that tennis area. So there are just some things like that that need to be reviewed, determination made, and then try and provide some consistency, so parents know what, what the situation is, and there, there doesn't seem to be, somebody's getting a favor and somebody's not.
Yeah, and so again, our sincere thanks to the public for this, because a lot of these issues were brought to light during the attendance area task force work that we did, and Dave did an incredible job leading that process. But it brought out all these issues, and the need for us to set the goals, to establish procedures, determine what they're gonna be this spring, to implement for the next school year, and to not displace anybody that's in the school they're currently at, you know? And I think those are really our goals for this process.
Can I add a bullet point?
Yep. Sean wants to add a bullet point.
Depends what it is, actually. It depends what it is.
He might be able to pick you up.
Delshun.
Yep.
I just handed one.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot.
I just need the piece, this piece.
Now you're too... Just kidding.
So there are several new developments that are being built right now. I would like to have a conversation, that if any of those new developments that are being built, if any of them will be ready for occupancy by, actually, anytime during the school year next year, that we talk about, and if they happen to be in Eagle Creek and Jackson's boundaries, that we have a talk about what we do with those brand-new families.
Great point.
So maybe what we could do is kind of like, what you're doing through this process of this facilities fee structure, is take this and, if you use these as kind of our organizational points, bring something back that's kind of a draft procedure, is something that we use to start taking shots at, and then continue to bring that back till we get it where we need it. There are some, as I said, some people who are already asking about that process, and so I, I think we can wait, we're still early enough on, but sure for those families, they probably might do it sooner rather than later.
I would agree, have a further, Dave, further leadership in this space.
It'll be a team effort, yeah. Sounds like you wanna be the board rep on that.
Tony Loski's long here.
Maybe the policy person should be in charge then.
Who is the policy person?
Not here, it's Gary.
I work that well.
We could take that. All right. That's, that's a pretty robust list, clearly there's a lot of things that have to be solved, and I think we knew that even though we made the decision, when we made that decision about Pearson, but this was not going to go away, we knew we were gonna have to address this, so how, I guess the question would be, how soon before you could, your committee or group that's gonna work on this, how soon before you can come back in front of the board and, you know, Pearson, we could put goals in?
I, I think Gary and I, and maybe a couple others, I talked to the principals group today, if we sat down and closed the door, and this is all we did, and we just said we're gonna do a draft, I think in a couple hours, we could put something out there that could be for review, right?
Yeah, the problem is, there are a lot of things we wanna close the door for a couple of hours, but yeah, we definitely wanna knock this down soon enough so that we can get feedback from people.
Yeah, and we, we don't wanna leave families hanging either.
No, I agree.
And so Gary talked about capture rate, and so I think in that open enrollment piece, that we wanna have something that's clear for families as well, so they know going in exactly what's gonna happen.
I think the timing is right too, since we just kind of went through it. Parents are more aware of it now than maybe they were previously.
Okay, and so the message for principals who are getting the requests now will be that the board is looking at this, we're gonna have a draft here within the next, I'd say, few weeks, maybe, that this becomes an agenda here for a few meetings in a row, and that they just need to hold tight on it, that it is something that's a priority right now, that we're gonna, we're gonna knock it out as quickly as possible.
Yeah, and I, I would say I'm tracking with the suggestion of it being a centralized process, and then taking it off the burden of the, of the principals themselves. I won't comment on who I think should be the facilitator of that process, I don't go forward with it.
Good chat.
All right.
Okay.
Are there, is there, are there any points up there that you wanna ask about right now, or provide, any feedback on, or, you know?
Well, I guess the two B, first bullet, the school capacity considerations, I mean, right now, if there's new students who wanna open enroll into 720, I would hope we wouldn't be steering them to Jackson or Eagle Creek, I would hope that we, unless they're with My comment is that I would hope that we're, we are taking school capacity considerations into effect for, for new students coming into our district, and having them go to one of the schools that is not above capacity.
If you think of anything else that, like Sean, I think, working something in there regarding new developments and centralizing the processes, we have that in there as well. If you think of something else that you think should be in there between now and the next time, certainly you can email Gary, or me, or John, or Sarah, and, you know, work that in.
This isn't currently in vorkel, could you email this to us, this list?
Sarah.
Thank you.
I think I should also go to the general public, look to see if they have any questions, her parents, get their input, they're one of us.
Sure.
All right.
What's the next slide?
I don't have any.
Update on unpaid meal charges, 3.5.
Yeah, I'll, I'll take that one, just to notify the board that, like any other school district, the issue of what to do with unpaid meal charges is a really complicated and difficult one. But I want to state first of all, that I don't want any student to experience a lunch where they're harmed in any way. And I, I don't want any student to feel alienated through whatever process we have. You know, lunch, just like learning, should be an enjoyable experience for, for every student in our district. So whatever we do, we need to have that as our driver through that process. So I really see a three-pronged approach as far as addressing families that haven't paid unpaid meal charges. The first one is to make sure that we're capturing as many free and reduced lunch applications as we possibly can, and to clarify that process with families. We, we've made some steps to improve that this year, and our numbers are much better. The problem is, many of those families that have gone on free and reduced don't have the ability to make up the back pay that they have, the debt that they had before we got them on the free and reduced roll. So one of my other points, I think, can address that a little bit. The next one is to take a look at, what exactly does our policy say? You know, are there other ways that we can word our policy, and that are better strategically to allow people to pay off? And, you know, be worded strong enough that we let people know, we have to be serious about this, this is debt that the school district takes on if we don't have family members pay off their debt. And the third bullet that I would have, is to take a whole look at our community donation process. We've got a lot of champions out there that we feel are willing to help us out with some of these debts, and some that have come forward already, so we need to determine what is our process gonna be? Do we fold it into all of the people that have come forward that wanna be a part of the academy process? Let them know, hey, here's another opportunity in which you can help kids and families? Does it include a letter from me soliciting outside businesses or local organizations to help? I really feel like the Shakopee community feels the same way. They don't want any child to be alienated during the lunch process, so that would be the third prong of a three-pronged approach.
I think there's several groups in this community who will support, make sure that we don't have children alienated or going hungry, whether it be the alumni association, or there be Rotary Lions Coalition.
Faith organizations.
Faith organizations, yeah. I, I think if we ask for help to clarify this, I think the community is, is responding very strongly.
Yeah, and we've made some vast improvements about this issue this year, so I'm really proud of that. But again, we just need to clarify those three bullet points, and I think we'll be in good shape.
Could you clarify, I don't know that I understood the scope of the, of the problem, like as far as looking at it semester at a time, or the full year, what, what are we looking at all, all end?
It varies, you know, I really, the worst part is when you come to a year-end budget, and you've got thousands of dollars of unpaid lunch debt. So if you don't hit it, you know, right while it's occurring, it could be a real problem. And if you, if a family's allowed to keep building it, building it, building it, and they don't qualify for free and reduced, then... they don't qualify for free and reduced, then, you know, how do you go about solving that problem other than the district being shouldered with, with that situation? But there are a lot of, there are stories behind every one, you know? It might be a short-term job loss for a family, so we want to show as much empathy and support for the families and especially students that we possibly can.
Excuse me, Pete, pardon, but are we also looking at the way that we're notifying parents?
Yeah.
Because I know personally on my own side, I have a non-verbal student who has been in like negative $25 at one time and I'm like, John, we'll have that happen.
Yeah.
But then I need the $25, so I get three phone calls, it's $25.
Right.
So looking at also those children who can't communicate with mom and dad that my balance is at zero.
Yeah, Angela brings up, you know, just so for microphone purposes, how we communicate out about some of these unpaid balances, and so that's part of the policy changes that, that we need to make. We need to do a better job of communicating that to families of non-verbal students of, of, you know, sometimes the note gets stuck in the backpack story, whatever it is, we need to make sure we're doing a great job of communicating. All right, our chair is stuck out. So, is everybody okay moving to the school board vacancy issue? All right. Again, I just want to repeat our deep, deep gratitude to Mary Romansky for the phenomenal service that she's given to this school district for many, many years. It's been an absolute privilege to work alongside her. I spoke with her on the phone la, last week, we had a great conversation. We'll be recognizing her at the next business meeting. Our door is always open for Mary. We also feel like, you know, as we have significant events in the district or opening new spaces or anything, Mary's going to be the first on our list to invite, so I just want to make that very, very clear. So upon her vacancy, because it's occurred in the last year of her tenure, the school board has three options of what they can do, and I want to clarify those three options. Option one is that that position can remain vacant until the school board election this November. So, again, the position can remain vacant. Option two is that the board simply names a replacement. In many cases, a board will just name a past board member, someone that's really involved with board politics, instances like that. Option three is that the board comes up with a process to solicit people that are interested in the open board position, and then follow through with that process, name a board member following a process. Now, it's important to note that there's a new Minnesota law, so that in options two and three, a community member can petition the naming of that new board member. They don't need to get a bunch of signed names on the petition, but they can approach the board and say, I really don't think that that person's a good person to fill the board seat. And so, that action has not been exercised by any districts in the state, it's a 30-day period, but I just wanted to clarify that. So again, there are three options that the board could take, keep it vacant, name a board member, or go, determine a process to name a new board member, and options two and three, there's a 30-day petition period that follows. Any questions on that at all?
Yeah, so you were saying that if we were to go through two or three, and we were able to come up with a candidate, whether it be just through a straight appointment or a process, that the public could petition and say that we don't believe that person's...
Correct. Any, any single member in the public can petition the naming of that new board member.
And does that mean that board member couldn't officially serve until that 30-day time period?
They can't serve until the 30-day time period is up. You are correct, yeah. So, let's say the board at the next business meeting said, we want person A to be the next board member. Well, it's a 30-day period kicks in until that person can actually start as a board member. And again, this is relatively new, new changes from MSBA, and they were a little fuzzy about what happens if a community member petitions that, so I need to get clarification from that.
If you're correct.
Yeah. But they said it hasn't happened anywhere yet, so they, but, so I said, well, I really need to know so I can make it clearer to our board.
Yeah, please.
It's really interesting. I wasn't aware of it. Somebody knew about it, John, but I can't remember who it was, I was really impressed that the person knew.
I guess I'll just, off the top of my head, I would favor those, I would rank those in inverse order, right? I would want to do a full, open, public process. It would be my bias, we've been through this once before when, well, technically not us because Enzo and I were just elected, we hadn't, we hadn't sworn in and Scott was appointed and started with us. But the board timed it a very public process of allowing people to apply and have interviews that were all public. So it's, it's certainly something that's worth closing the mask. I think we could also replicate some of the processes we've used for CFAC and the Citizens Community Group where there's an application form. That's just, I guess, my preference.
I've thought a lot about this over this time, and I agree with Matt, I would like to be able to appoint somebody, somebody who's interested in women. So.
Sorry, I shouldn't have handed it over.
Do you want to say it again?
I agree with Matt. I think we should appoint somebody.
I also agree that I would like to have a seventh board member sitting here with us, helping us this year, so I too want to appoint. I've thought about this a lot too, and is there any, you know, option two is just appointing someone and just throwing out there the opportunity or our option of taking a look at the last election and seeing who ran, I mean, not who ran, but, I know, I mean, these are people who obviously expressed interest, they put in the time and the energy, seeing if there's any willingness there, and if that's not the direction we go, then asking them to, to apply for whatever process we determine as a board, but just a thought I had.
And I would just recommend that you all ponder this for a little bit, we can talk about it at the retreat if we want to on Saturday, and then declare what we want to do from there.
Would it be possible for you to have detailed information on this petition process by Saturday so that we can actually make a meaningful objective decision?
Sure.
Okay, yep.
I too amend, Paul on board was getting somebody in our seventh position, and that's what we're, we're elected for, to have seven people on board. But that is, that is an interesting thought, I never heard that, or why, I mean, because I get to delay the whole process, somebody was also in the same petition, I guess, I don't know how that, interesting how that works.
Well, petition meaning they got a chance to have their voice heard in opposition to this election, which would be no different than we, anybody could today oppose anything they want, but we would still proceed on the 30th. I would think it wouldn't be as easy as one or two people oppose and we can't do it. That doesn't seem like it makes an incredibly large amount of sense, but I just, I think a clarification is really important. I too am wildly in favor of a seventh person being here, however, I want to make sure that I have all the facts, I know technically what I'm standing up for before I make my particular decision. All right. If there's nothing else on the school board vacancy, item number four is other, and we had no other. So we'll move on to item five, upcoming meetings and important dates. CFAC meets tomorrow at six, everybody's favorite group, it says Valentine's Day like Bach on Wednesday. And the 17th, we do have our winner retreat, that'll be right here, 9:02. And then the Sisters Communication Group is meeting on February 19th. Policy on the 26th, Finance Committee meeting 26th, and as well as a, our next school board business meeting is the 26th, and then we close out February with another Bach meeting. All right, that brings us to the end of our work session agenda. I would like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
If I could add one thing under other, I should have spoke up earlier, I apologize. The Midwacanans have awarded a grant of $100,000 to the school district. They actually started that over a year ago, and the school district hasn't followed through with the, with the proposals for them to look at, so we've done that in the last month or so, and I received notice that, that they have given us a grant. It can't supplement or supplant something that we're presently doing, and there are some needs throughout the ages of kids from preschool up through the alternative program for some, you know, issues that kids are having with mental health. So we're going to be formulating a plan to provide additional services over an 18-month to two-year period for those children that are in that situation using those dollars. So, I want to publicly thank the tribe for providing this for us. It's a, it's a very nice effort on their part to help us get something extra for kids who are in need in this district, and they should be commended for that. Ashley, I think, is, you know, we'll get more information out about that, but just wanted, I apologize for not doing any more.
Thanks, John.
Yes, Sean.
Thank you.
But will you adjourn? I don't know if it's another or wrong.
I know that Gary has already said this several times tonight, but I want to personally thank Mr. McGroom for the service that he's given us in the last three months and the steady hand that he has had on our ship and his institutional knowledge and his financial wherewithal and for answering all my questions and being there for me whenever I needed some advice, support, and some questions answered. So I want to personally thank him for what you have done for us. I know that could have been playing pickleball. And I also want to thank your wife, because she has been nothing but supportive, so.
Thank you.
And on that note, I'll just make sure that you are, is there planning to be here on the 26th, if that works for your calendar?
Whatever Gary tells me.
If you would be so kind as to indulge us for a short while, I would greatly appreciate it.
And for those at home, I want you to know that John said, whatever Gary tells me.
He did. All right, now I'm going to entertain that motion to adjourn. So, whoa, whoa, discussion. All is favored, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Most satisfied, motion carries, we are adjourned.